We have five of seven presidents, so we do have a quorum.
Let's see. The planning commission to order. We have six of eight, so we do have a quorum. Is anybody, or either of the two other commissioners virtual?
No, sir. Both Mr. Maxi and Mr. Cruz are unable to attend tonight.
Okay, so we have six of eight. We'll do the pledge in the invocation. Steve, would you lead us in the invocation, please? And we'll do the pledge.
Lord, we just thank you so much for letting us come together tonight and do the things that you would have us to do for the county. May that you help us make decisions, guide us and direct us, Lord, that we would have the right things, the right tools and equipment to take care of business here. We ask that you give us safe passage home and help us along our way until we meet again. Ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gathered here tonight to have a discussion, a fact-finding session. We have two of the experts here in person. The others will be joining us virtually. Somebody's got to begin, so I guess it might as well be me. I think I would like to have David Spears answer a list of questions for me, if you would. Microphone's right there, sir.
Mr. Boe, Chairman Boe, if I may interject for just a moment. At this time, first of all, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors to finding it agreeable to meet with the Planning Commission tonight for this work session. And if it's okay with you, Chairman Boe, and Planning Commission members, I would just like to briefly introduce the expert panel that we have with us tonight, both in-person and virtual. And I'd also like the opportunity for each of them to describe their position currently held and their background.
That'd be fine.
Do you find that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
And Mr. Spears, if you would just take just a moment, I'm going to go through the list. But you can speak first since you're up there. I won't make you sit down and come back. How about that?
All right.
Tonight, we are delighted and very grateful to have joining us a wonderful team of multiple agencies that have more than enough background and education and experience to help shed lots of light on this fact-finding session tonight. Joining us from Department of Mining and Mineral Energy is David Spears. He's a state geologist, and he works in the Charlottesville office of this state office. Along with him in the DMME office is Michael Skiffington, along with Damian Farrar. Joining us from DEQ is James Golden. He is the Director of Regional Operations and the Piedmont Regional Director. Joining us from Virginia Tech in the Office of Geosciences is John Sirmack. And we also have Aaron Ling, who is the Virginia Household Water Quality Program Administrator and Extension Associate and Program Coordinator in the Biological Systems Engineering Department. Joining us from the Virginia Department of Health is Paul Lewis, an environmental health specialist here at the Health Department in Buckingham. So we'll start with Mr. Spears, since he has the lucky spot at the microphone right now. Mr. Spears?
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much.
All right. My name is David Spears. I work for the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy. My title is the State Geologist of Virginia. I am a certified professional geologist in Virginia, certification number 1520. And I've held that since about 2002. I have a master's degree in geology from Virginia Tech. I got my hokie pen right here. I have, I also happen to be a 30-year resident of Buckingham County. I live on Bell Road over by Cedar Baptist Church. I'm in Mr. Allen's district. I've been a geologist, a paid working geologist, for about 40 years. I started out in the petroleum industry, so I have a lot of experience with drilling big wells. I have a little bit of experience with drilling small wells. But in my role at DMME, I've worked on coal, I've worked on natural gas, I've worked on gold and other metals. But in my role as state geologist, I've done a lot of work on, on public policy, and I work quite a bit with local government.
Thank you. For the clarity of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, would you explain the difference between exploratory drilling and mining?
Well, let's finish with the rest of the, the panel first, Mr. Boe. They're, they're waiting to...
Oh, okay.
And then we'll start with the, a roundtable of questions from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors tonight, okay?
Yeah, that's right.
That way it gives everyone a chance to tell about themselves. So while we're in this state office of DMME, Mr. Skiffington, are you available to introduce yourself and to tell us about who you are and what you do for this particular office?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Skiffington. I am the Director of Policy and Planning for the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy. And I've had that job for about 11 years now. My main function is I'm the primary agency liaison to the General Assembly, and I'm also the agency's regulatory coordinator for its regulated divisions. I'm happy to be here tonight.
Thank you so very much for joining us. And in this same office is Damian Farrar, a mine inspector. Damian, are you available?
I am. My name is Damian Farrar. I'm a mine inspector with the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy, Division of Mineral Mining. I've been working for the division in this capacity for 22 years. I've been working in the mining industry for over 35 years. I'm a professional engineer. And I've inspected the mining operations up in Buckingham County for a number of years. So I'm familiar with that area.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us tonight. And Mr. Golden, James Golden with DEQ, are you available? Have you joined us?
Yes, I'm on... Yes, I'm the Director of Piedmont Regional Office. Our service area is 33 counties. And I'm happy to say one of which is Buckingham. I've been with DEQ for 30 years, and I've held numerous technical and managerial level positions while with DEQ.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. John Sirmack with Virginia Tech?
Hello, my name is John Sirmack. I'm a professor at, in Virginia, at Virginia Tech in the Department of Geosciences. I'm happy to be here to try to help kind of think about this a little bit. I've worked around the mining industry my entire career. I've worked for industry, I've worked for consulting, I've worked for NGOs, I've worked for lots of different organizations. I spent a lot of time thinking about the pros and cons of mining, the good and the bad, and the social and political and environmental impacts. And I, my specialty or areas of interest where I publish on and do resource extraction are water quality and water quantity. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Ling with Virginia Tech?
Good evening, everyone. I'm, my name is Aaron Ling. I'm an Extension Associate in the Biological Systems Engineering Department at Virginia Tech. And I coordinate a statewide program that offers well testing and education for homeowners in about 65 counties every year. We analyze for a variety of bacteriological metals and elements, and then basically explain what the results mean and possible remediation, including well maintenance and water treatment to homeowners that rely on private wells and springs in Virginia. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And Paul Lewis with the Health Department?
Hi, my name is Paul Lewis. I work with the Health Department, and I've been digging holes and looking at soil for about 30 years. My specialty is wastewater disposal, and I just have an idea of where to put wells for drinking water. That's my expertise.
Thank you. And I believe Chairman Boe, you are ready for some questions.
Spears, you want to step up?
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. For clarity's sake, let's start with the difference between core sampling and mining.
Okay, I'd say there's a, a technical distinction as well as legal distinction. So technically, core sampling involves the taking of rock samples with a drill bit. And typically, it involves a steel bit and a small drill rig. Usually, the steel bit has industrial diamonds embedded in it. And that, that drill bit is spun by the drill rig and pushed down into the ground, using water to cool the bit. And they drill down, and then they pull the, the whole drill string back out and collect a core sample. So they end up with a, a solid cylinder of rock. And I could have brought one. I have some sitting at home. But it's a cylinder of rock. And then those cylinders are sent off and analyzed at a laboratory. So it, it's not really a commercial activity because the cylinders, the rock samples aren't sold. I'd say it's more of an applied science. So it's, the drilling is done by companies who are looking for minerals. And so they, they collect those samples, and then they, they analyze them for the minerals that they're, they're targeting. And then there's a big legal difference. Mining involves actually putting some kind of hole in the ground and extracting material and selling it. That can be either through an underground mining operation or an open pit mining operation. Some mining is done simply by the drilling of wells, and they call it solution mining. That's, that's a different kind of mining. But the, the really big difference is that mining is a highly, highly regulated activity in Virginia and nationwide. Every state has laws and regulations that, that govern mining. Exploration by core drilling is not a regulated activity. It's specifically excluded from the definition of mining in the Code of Virginia. And so it, it's, it's not regulated because it's widely understood to be a harmless activity. It's about collecting rock samples. They drill a hole, they collect a sample, they plug the hole with cement, and then they go away. That's it, collecting rock samples. Mining is a much different thing. Once someone wants to actually make a mine and, and sell material from the ground, it requires an extensive permitting process from DMME. And one of the things DMME requires before they will issue a permit is a proof of a special use permit from the locality. So the process of mining triggers a whole set of regulatory requirements and inspections and review that exploration by core drilling does not require.
I understand you to say that core drilling is not regulated in the state of Virginia?
It's not regulated in the state of Virginia. Exploration for minerals, other than uranium. If you're drilling for uranium, that does require a permit. But drilling for other minerals requires no sort of permit, no sort of state review.
Does drilling automatically lead to mining?
No. Drilling is part of an exploration activity that either they find something that's valuable and commercially viable, or they don't. It's exploration. It does not necessarily lead to mining. Perhaps, maybe one of the other panelists can... Dr. Sirmack at Virginia Tech, he might be able to shed some light on that. But someone who's worked in the industry could give you an indication of what percentage of exploration projects actually result in mining. Now, I know of at least two other prospects in Buckingham County that have been drilled in the last 40 years and never turned into a mine. One, one is in Mr. Allen's district between his house and my house. It's called the Tower Hill Prospect. It's been drilled several times in the past 20 years, and it's still just a hill just sitting there.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I pose a question?
Sure, sure, sir.
It's my understanding that the location and question up at Warmminster Church Road has been drilled about 23, 23 to 30 times. How many times were those sites drilled?
The other places?
Yes, sir.
I don't know. It's not public information because it's not a regulated activity. But typically, a prospect will be drilled multiple times. A core sampling program typically involves a number of cores, 10, 20, at the very least. Dr. Sirmack could probably give a better answer than I could about that.
Dr. Sirmack?
Yes?
Can you give us an estimate of how many holes you've got to drill, drill before you possibly end up with a mine? In other words, how many holes are dug fruitlessly? No mine materialized.
That, that's a good, that's a good question. It depends a lot on the geology. If we're talking about a gold deposit, I know a, a little bit about the area there, but not a, a lot about the deposit itself. So it just depends on how much we do or don't know. But, you know, from, you know, like Dave said, from a mine, from an exploration are two very different kind of intensities of drilling, so to speak. But yeah, so, so the answer, unfortunately, I can tell you is it takes a number of... Depending on the deposit, so it's very site-specific as to what happens. What I will tell you, the first question Dave was talking about was the chance of a, of exploration becoming a mine in the gold industry. The number is usually less than 5% from the time that they're finding, you know, going out and trying to get the information that actually turns into a mine, an active, a mine that actually is kind of, you know, kind of moves forward, either underground, surface, or in situ, any of the three. Is usually around the numbers about 5% in the gold industry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I follow up with Dr. Sirmack, Mr. Chairman? In terms of core sampling, could you talk about, Dr. Sirmack, could you talk about variations, maybe, of core sampling? And how different depths could, if they do, or could lead to any environmental impacts, especially with regards to water and the ground?
Yeah, I mean, when you're talking about core sampling, you know, again, you're talking about a small hole, like you say, that you put into the ground. It's, it's very dependent on, you know, what aquifer systems are, are around, so to speak, and kind of where you are. But by and large, when, when you talk about exploration, and as Dave said, core drilling is, you know, again, from a impact to other wells and other water sources, by and large, I, you know, again, this would take a lot more, you know, sitting down with the science and the specifics of some things. But, but I mean, by and large, as Virginia has said, as many other places too, you know, exploration is just part of the process. And from a water impact perspective, by and large, and especially in hard rock materials, so you're talking, you know, hard rock versus soft rock, fracture flow. I mean, there's lots of different mechanisms and lots of different things. So again, it, it's not kind of a one-size-fits-all. Geology and hydrogeology are both very variable depending on where you are. So again, but, but from a, from, from an environmental impact perspective, when you're thinking about kind of the water and how much water you're using, and how big a core hole, and how many, you know, all of those things are, are things you kind of take into account to think about.
Could I follow up, Mr. Chairman, briefly?
Yes.
Sir, could you comment on, on maybe, you know, with the 20-some-odd holes, say 25 holes, just for your estimate's sake? In terms of the, there is some usage of water that is being employed to execute these core sampling, these core samplings for commercial use. Can you maybe comment on, based on that number, on that estimate, on how much water might have been used to drill the holes that are in the location in which we're discussing tonight? I've, I've been told maybe 2,000 to 3 gallons, 2,000 to 3,000 gallons per hole. Whether that's correct, I don't know. So that's why I'm asking that question for clarification, sir.
Yeah, I mean, again, it depends on if it's a 2-inch hole or a 6-inch hole, and it depends on how easy or hard it is to drill. So the answer is that I, I don't know. I mean, that information, I mean, that type of number you're talking about seems reasonable, but it's a wide range. And again, from a water intensity, maybe somebody else on this call knows more about the specifics of some of the core drills around this area. Again, I haven't worked in this area specifically. I couldn't tell you. You know, you can get more information, you know, down the road from you, maybe not, maybe a little bit of a different deposit, you know, but there's lots of exploration and mining holes around. And maybe somebody else on the call could talk a little bit more about, you know, the actual numbers there. But, but again, you know, there, usually it's not a super water-intensive process, but it, you know, it does consume some water for sure.
You said, a while ago, somebody said it was using the water just for cooling processes, not for actually doing the drilling.
The water actually cools the bit. The water is pumped down the drill stem and cools the bit and brings the rock chips back up. So it is, it is used during the drilling process. But I was going to suggest that we ask Mr. Golden from DEQ about the regulation of groundwater withdrawals. And if, if any of this activity, would we require a water well, a groundwater withdrawal permit?
Yes, so the regulations DEQ administers relative to groundwater withdrawal only applies to the eastern part of Virginia in what's defined as the groundwater management area. It's generally areas east of Interstate 95 on the east part of the state. So we would not regulate groundwater withdrawal in Buckingham County.
And is that a General Assembly-type, Code of Virginia-type thing? Because why wouldn't we be involved in that territory? Or any other county close to Buckingham? Can you all hear me?
There are state regulations that define the groundwater management area that is regulated by DEQ. And it's just defined and focuses on those aquifers located generally east of Interstate 95.
I think maybe what we're getting at here, is core drilling likely to have an effect on private wells within the area? Quarter mile, half mile, mile away?
I would say the drilling itself, they're, they're pumping water into the ground, clean water into the ground. So if anything, they're putting water back in the ground. Now, the question of where that water came from is a separate question. What we have in Buckingham is what they call an unconfined fractured rock aquifer. So the water in your well comes from whatever fractures that your well penetrated. It's a very difficult hydrogeology to understand, and the only way to answer that question is to actually do a pump test, where you pump one well, pump water out of one well, while monitoring other wells nearby. I'd say a mile away in a fractured rock aquifer, you'd have to pull many, many thousands of gallons out of the ground to affect a well that's a mile away. But to really answer the question, you would need to do a pump test.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask? Sure. Mr. Spears, could I ask you a question with a couple? You've sort of clarified, but I just want to make sure for the record. In, in the core sampling, there is no chemicals used. It's auger with water, correct?
I haven't actually been on this particular company's drill rig, so I don't know. But the typical industry practice is to use plain water.
Plain water, okay. To Mr. Jordan's question, there was, I think it's been 27 holes on the subject property of Warmminster Church. It's 85 acres. Is it a normal procedure when they're drilling that these, they're not all going to be concentrated in one area for the most part? Not when they're exploratory. They're going to be spread out normally, looking to get these samples?
Well, there is actually a map available of where the core samples were drilled, and I don't know what the spacing is on them. But the company, it's expensive to drill cores, so they don't drill more than they need to.
Right.
So yeah, I, I don't know what the spacing is, but there is a publicly available map from Aston Bay that shows the spacing of the wells.
Okay, thank you, sir. So if exploratory holes have any long-term effects on the environment?
If they're plugged properly, they should not. The hole is open for a period of hours. Is the microphone still working? The, the hole is open for a period of hours to days, and then they, the typical industry practice is to plug it with cement. So it becomes solid rock again, essentially, when they're done with it. So I'd say in that case, there'd be very, very little opportunity for contamination.
I just want to ask it again while we, while we're here, because so many people brought it up before that they worried about it. We had one person who said that they believed that their well was going dry because of the drilling that's close by. And some others were worried or said that they thought that their well was getting contaminated. So would you just hit it one more time and say, would you think about running the well dry?
Okay, I, I haven't seen...
On the table?
I haven't seen any of the evidence. I would love to see what evidence they have. It's, as a scientist, I cannot imagine that a process that puts water into the ground is going to cause a well to go dry. It just, it just doesn't make any sense. There's no sensible scientific explanation for that. In terms of contaminating wells, I, I would have to ask, have those wells been tested? If there is actually evidence of contamination, then we would apply the best scientific thinking to try to trace the source of that contamination. But again, they're drilling with a steel bit with diamonds in it. They're putting plain water down the hole. It's just hard to imagine any kind of contamination that, that could happen. I'm not saying it could never happen.
Right.
But, but you'd really need some, some evidence. We'd need to see, see what is showing up in the wells, and then try to find a source of what that material is.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could have a little area there to do the testing there, well water. But do you know how deep or what size the holes are? I'm just trying to get an idea. I know you're not a well driller.
The Aston Bay has, has pretty much published that material. It's, it's widely available, but I don't have it. I don't have it handy. But, but typically, they would drill hundreds of feet. I mean, if they wanted to delineate a, a mineral deposit, they're going to be drilling hundreds to probably 1,000 feet.
Right. I've heard 300 feet, and I've heard 2-inch holes and 3-inch holes. I just didn't know.
They might have done both. They might have done both.
All right. Pretty much, you answered most of the questions I had anyway.
Mr. Spears, I have a question. So if, if this is not regulated by the state, then who is checking to make sure that they're properly sealed?
No one does that. It's, it's the industry. These companies want to be, they, they don't want to leave a bad... They, they don't want to leave a mess behind. It suits them to not leave a mess behind. So standard practice is to fill the hole with cement and then make sure it's sealed before they leave.
So we're talking about concrete, that you'd have to have a concrete truck?
They call it grout, G-R-O-U-T, and it's more of a, a cement than, than concrete. So it, it doesn't carry the, the pebbles and the sand that concrete would have, and it's more of a, a pure cement, a pure calcium carbonate cement. Thank you.
Mr. Bryan, you posed the question about the holes that were there. So myself, along with Lynn Hill, who's our zoning enforcement officer, we visited the site and saw multiple of these holes. There was one that was open, and the rest of it was not sealed, I would say appropriately with grout, because it was a, like a sack creep that you're supposed to mix with sand. We actually found a bag of it on the property, and you could actually flake it away with your hand and remove it from the hole. And the holes were very close in proximity, probably 10 to 50 feet from one another, and we counted 16.
In my understanding, that they're supposed to fill it up to grout, what they call plowing distance, and then...
There's no plowing distance around it at all.
And then the plowing distance would be 8, 12, 16 inches? They'd have put something that's lighter, that would not get hard?
It's grass, broom straw around it.
Yeah, dirt, maybe too.
I also visited sites, and the cores, they take over just a 2-inch core.
2-inch?
And when we visited the site, must have modeled on myself, it was... And when we visited the site, most of Miles and myself, it was, they were all filled up with concrete. It was no open holes at all.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. And I'm going to kind of direct this at whoever wants to answer it. What does the data show in terms of what y'all have seen and in terms of the experience that with the depth, depths that we're talking with regards to the project that's been going on for four years unbeknownst to the county, what's the likelihood with the number of holes and the depth that an aquifer could have been disturbed in a hydrological environment in which we live, if that makes sense?
Anybody at the state want to answer that one?
Aaron, would you be available to answer any questions in regards to Mr. Miles's questions about water? And please note that we did reach out to a hydrologist with USGS, and they turned us down because there is no federal information, no study information posted or available on the county of Buckingham. So they were unwilling to participate tonight. Also, with the Virginia Waterwell Association, Christina Ekoff, they were unable to provide anyone. And I know that I reached out to Jeff Wells with, I believe he's with DEQ or the Health Department, with no response. Paul Lewis is with us tonight as an environmental specialist to maybe speak to some of the water issues, if you would be available to do so. Paul, is this your wheelhouse, or would you feel comfortable with DEQ? Maybe Mr. Golden, if you'd like to jump on?
And the reason I ask this, Mr. Chairman, is this is probably one of the biggest concerns in the, in the general community with regards to the core sampling and the water.
Can I ask a clarifying question? This is Erin Ling. Are you asking about the depth of the cores that were drilled, or the depth of private wells in the area, like drinking water well?
Sure, yes, ma'am. It's sort of all-inclusive in terms of the depth. Say, between 500 and 800 feet down, a core sample goes down. And maybe it's lateral, maybe it's not. But what does the data show in terms of what you've seen in terms of where our aquifer is in this county? In terms of the potential for hitting an aquifer? Or have you seen and experienced an aquifer get hit at these depths with a core sampling operation?
So just to speak from a private well perspective, I think it was Mr. Spears that was speaking earlier about the complexity of the bedrock aquifers in a place like Buckingham County. It's under lain by crystalline bedrock, and anticipating where those fractures intersect a particular borehole for a privately supplied household, it's very hard to predict how water moves, how quickly it moves, how open or not open those fractures are for contributing water to a drinking water well. So my data from Buckingham, which is based on programs that we've done over the past few years there, shows, this is homeowner reported, based on well completion reports, a range of 30 to 485 feet deep for private wells that we've tested. So there's a huge range. There's also going to be a huge range in the construction of those wells, when they were constructed, whether or not they were constructed after Virginia Department of Health put well regulations into effect in 1990 or before, and how those wells have been maintained over time. So we regularly, this reminds me a lot of the conversation around the pipeline construction in southwest Virginia, where there is a fair amount of concern, you know, about potential impacts on private drinking water wells. There's not really a silver bullet contaminant that we would, you know, not find and then find to document that there's been an impact. So being able to document that there's been, you know, sediment movement in some of these fractures that could contribute to changes in well yields, you know, hundreds of yards away, it's just very hard to prove. And I think someone else has said that, that that wasn't already happening or hadn't happened for some other reason. For example, everyone being home quite a bit more during COVID, you know, for example, and using quite a bit more water, that kind of thing. It would be hard to document. So from what I can see, there's a big range, and I would just further reiterate the complexity of understanding that fractured bedrock and how wells are connected or not underground.
Thank you.
Jordan, I heard you say 500 to 800 feet deep.
Sure.
I'm going to go back to one of our earlier meetings, and the geologist who was doing it, his name was Josh Mace, and he testified, I guess you'd call it, that their deepest well was 300 feet on a diagonal, not 500 to 800 vertical.
Thank you.
Aaron, what did you say the shallowest wells are in the fracture stuff around there, more or less? What was the shallowest? I mean?
The shallowest reported was a 30-foot well. We probably, very rarely, will see something like a bored well that's still, it might even be fed by something similar to a spring. So it's really hard to say. Local Department of Health might have some more accurate numbers, you know, in terms of what's normal for Buckingham County, as you know.
Is it at all possible to tell if this became a mine? How many acres would this mine be, or how big would it be? Is there any way to tell that?
First of all?
I could.
Yeah, how about we let John go?
That's fine.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, again, the information from the, if the drill spacing that you're talking about is all in a concentrated area, right? I mean, I think it depends a lot on the geology and kind of where things are, and, and, you know, that, that really is, you know, when we're looking for gold and fractures, which it sounds like that's what they're looking for, this is really hard to figure out kind of what and how, you know, kind of what and how. So they found some really high gold in one of the fractures, and that's why they spaced around closer, and then they went out further. So, yeah, I think it's really difficult to say how big that mine would be. And actually, you know, to be honest with you, if it's fractures and quartz, it may be an underground mine, or whether, you know, again, it's a surface mine, all of those things are just, again, this is way too early. And my perspective as geologist, doing this at companies and, you know, kind of thinking about it, it's very early, you know. Now, there may be information, and people can look at this and have much better information. But, but again, with no information, it's really hard to answer those kinds of questions.
Thank you.
The surface footprint of a mine is really going to depend on whether it's an underground operation or a surface operation. Now, in some of the previous minutes of these joint informational meetings, I read where a couple of fellows in hip boots approached a landowner and were asking for permission to do some gold panning in a, in a stream on the individual's property. And this person asked about the next step, if this prospecting turned up a viable deposit. And that, those individuals replied that it would more than likely be a surface mine. Now, a surface mine's going to have a larger footprint, because to extract a given area underground safely, you've got to have benches or banks that would slope up to the surface that's going to make the surface impact much larger than that area that's actually disturbed underground. So the area would include the pit, a plant, and an area for the disposal of mine waste. It may be 50 acres, it may be 300 acres or larger, it just depends on how the mine is going to be developed.
Yeah, that was Mr. Ferrer, Farmville. And I would just like to make the point that I even hesitate to bring up the subject of mining, because really, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about exploration by core drilling. Mining is a completely separate issue that would happen years or decades down the road and require a completely separate regulatory approval process. This is not a question about mining. Yes.
Could I ask a question, sir?
Yes.
This is for whoever wants to answer it. So just doing, just doing some research as to Aston Bay's website, I'm going to preface my question with these two statements with regards to what they've published on their website. And they've said that their drill programs have confirmed a high-grade at-surface gold vein system in Buckingham, as well as an adjacent water zone of lower-grade disseminated gold mineralization. And they also noted, and forgive me for messing these measurements up, but drilling on the Buckingham vein included core length intercepts of up to 3.5 GTAU over 2.03M and 24.7 GTAU over 3.57M, 2019 drilling, and a 5.81 GTAU over 6.29M, including 29.9 GTAU over .92M, 19.25 GTAU over 1.4M, and 14.54 GTAU over 1.06M in quartz veins material. Based on these results that have been published, what would our experts' opinions be on the likelihood that their findings would lead to an open pit mine?
I'll go back to my number, which is, again, I know these numbers well. And so, again, I think that, that, again, the chances of, you know, having a hole, I mean, I work with mines that have much greater numbers than that, and it'll never be a mine. So I still stand by, you know, just on average, I'm not saying this won't be a mine, but on average, you know, exploration to see these kinds of numbers is just, to me, those are normal numbers. And I would still think that the chance of it being, you know, actually turning into a mine from where it is today, you know, based on the information I have, which is very, which is almost nothing, except, you know, a few numbers, is still, you know, less than 5%.
Yeah, and I would say some of those numbers are quite rich in terms of grams per ton. That's what GT stands for, grams per ton. But they're over very short distances. The longest instance they measured, I think you said, was 6.9 meters, so that's about 20 feet. So they have some rich veins, but in a very, very small area so far.
Does any other county in the state that you're aware of require anything to core sample?
I would direct that question, Mr. Skiffington.
Okay, Mr. Skiffington. Are you aware?
I am not. I'm not, but there are over 130 localities in the Commonwealth, so I certainly can't swear to it, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, since it's not regulated, how would, how would he know? I don't know. I mean, it seems like this problem would have come up someplace else if it was a problem. I don't know.
In terms, they've got, I'm a layman when it comes to core sampling. I've never sampled any core, maybe an apple with my mouth. But there have got to be variations of core sampling. And I referred to Ms. Carter, or I asked Ms. Carter, didn't, there was some talk about doing a core sample when the, when there were some questions about the soil back behind the Dillon Primary Building, when maybe a library would be there, right? There were some, there were some loose discussions of a core sample, VDOT core samples. A lot of things core sample. So, so can one of these experts talk about the variations of that? Obviously, there's a depth variation, and there's a how you go into ground variation.
Look at you again, David.
It's nearly an identical process. VDOT cores that I've seen are usually quite large, they're about six-inch cores. But it's the same process. They go in with a hollow stem drill rig, pump water as they're drilling, and they collect a core. Yeah, but you're right, typically, a VDOT core would only go down maybe between 10 and 40 feet, depending on the material. But it's, it's the same mechanical process of collecting a sample. It's just, VDOT usually takes a larger sample.
Sure. And so, Mr. Chairman, so the variation would be the depth. That's the biggest variation of this, when it comes to the library or this.
Yeah, and for some projects, say if you were to build a skyscraper on, in Virginia Beach, you'd probably want to go down a couple hundred feet with that core sample and make sure what the soil conditions are beneath, beneath that building. But I'd say, yeah, typical VDOT core, where they're not building a great big tower, would be less than 100 feet.
With everybody we got here now, there's experts in all these different fields, does anybody have any idea of whether this is a good thing, bad thing, or something the county should or shouldn't be doing? If you could let us, just give us any kind of idea of what you think? Or each one of y'all come down the line and just say, well, think it's a good idea, bad idea, or whatever? Give us a little help? More help? I don't like nobody wants to do that.
I'll just go back to one of my original points, that exploration by core drilling is an unregulated activity for a good reason. It's widely understood to be harmless and just not a problem. They drill a hole, they take a rock sample, they plug the hole.
But it's not regulated.
It's not regulated.
Is it typical, Mr. Chairman, and experts, if I may ask, that this use would go on for about four years, and the county wouldn't know about it? Talking about it not being regulated, you know, going off of what Supervisor Bryan's question was? Is that something that goes on in Virginia all the time?
I can tell you that dozens of core holes have been drilled in Buckingham in the past 40 or 50 years without any oversight. The private landowners and the companies that lease the mineral rights from those landowners have had this relationship for many, many years. And it happens all over Virginia, it happens all over the country. They drill a hole, they take a rock sample, they plug the hole, and they go away.
Specifically, these depths that we're talking about?
I can't.
That's, that's what I wanted.
I can't say for sure, because, again, it's not public information. What they're doing is not public information. It's, it's between the landowner and the mineral company. So, yeah, we don't know. We, we happen to know, I mean, just by being involved with the industry and being involved with geology, we have, in our files, we have records of some of these core holes. Sometimes a company will donate their records to us. So we have, we actually have some physical core in our core facility in Charlottesville that came from Buckingham during the 20th century. So it's happened a lot before, and no one has really taken any notice. I remember, it was about 1995 or 1996, driving on Tower Hill Road, the drill rig just moved right along Tower Hill Road over about a month and a half. And I don't know how many cores they took. I think it was Reynolds Metals at the time, I believe, was the company that was doing the work. But it was right there, just a mile from my house, probably a mile and a half from your house. They plugged the holes and they went away.
Thank you.
I'll add something to this. A lot of people don't realize it, but we have over 430 mineral mines permitted in the state of Virginia. At one time, there were almost that many coal mines. Most of these are large operations that take many millions of dollars and years to develop. And most of them would not have been developed and years to develop. And most of them would not have been developed without exploratory drilling that proved a deposit. We don't think about it, but these stone quarries put in core holes to determine whether the granite, or limestone, or diabase, whatever is going to be turned into an aggregate, will meet the state's specifications for road construction or concrete work. Cyanite mining would not be expanding that operation without core drilling to determine the viability of an area that they would expand the mine into. The coal mines, which most of them are below grade, are all core-drilled. It's a common practice that is part of the initial planning to put in one of these large, multimillion-dollar operations. And it happens all the time, all over the state. Even in the eastern part of the state, in the tidewater area, core drilling is used where mineral sands are mined to determine the depth of those deposits and the extent of those deposits for planning purposes. So it's, this isn't a one-off in Buckingham County. It's happening all over the state of Virginia, and for that matter, all over the United States, in North America, and even the world. So it's a pretty common practice.
I'm going to, Damon, I think you said it really well. And I just, and since I work at Virginia Tech, I can kind of be a little bit more lib-free, I guess, is my response to your question about, you know, would you recommend, you know, a mine in your area? I think you need to think about, right, and this is what I do, right? It's the social impact, the environment impact. There's pros and cons to these things, right? And so, we all like to use a lot of stuff, right? I mean, uranium, I was involved with the Virginia Uranium Mine. And nobody wanted a uranium mine in Virginia, and so it turned into, you know, a difficult discussion. But we still get, you know, in Virginia, almost 40% of our electricity comes from nuclear power. So, I mean, we just need to think about some of these things, the pros and the cons. And so, I think if the data, you know, you don't need to make that decision now. And as Dave said, you know, it's really early on to know if this will ever be a mine or not. But there are good things from a mine. And again, Damian mentioned cyanide. I mean, cyanide in Buckingham, you know, I think has a good relationship with the landowners, with the people. There's jobs, there's taxes, there's opportunity for young people that, you know, are from that area. They go to Virginia Tech, they get engineering degrees, they go back to where they came from, and they work. I mean, I worked some at cyanide and do some things over there. So, you know, and the aggregate mining is much bigger, you know, from a volume perspective than gold ever will be, right? And so, again, so all of these things, I think, you know, again, I think getting the information and then trying to make a decision, because at this point in time, there's really no information then. But again, I can say this, I teach this to my students, this is what I talk about all the time. And I try to convince communities that a mine is good for them, you know, in Virginia, in wherever, around the world. And so, you know, but you as individuals need to decide if there's enough, you know, good versus bad. So it's a cost-benefit. And if the mining company's smart, you're all going to be happy, and you're going to get something out of it, and it's going to be good, and it's going to raise everybody's vote, so to speak. But, you know, again, but that's down the road, you know, from mining down the road. And that's just my personal perspective. I've worked in the middle of this my entire career. I do environmental and social management of mines, and I see the positive, and I also see some of the, you know, things in my bad.
This is Erin. I can also add, just kind of for perspective, you know, thinking about these core boreholes and just being developed with water, and that's all that's happening. You know, it's very typical in Virginia, although a properly abandoning a private water well is required by the Department of Health, that is not enforced, because there's not really the manpower to go out and, you know, tromp around on people's private property to make sure it's done properly. So I would say there's a pretty high incidence, you know, of wells that have been, that are no longer in use, that are basically represent an open borehole down into the groundwater and potential contamination from the surface, you know, that could pose a similar risk, you know, that's across the state, across all the counties in the state, and some cities. Likewise, wells that have not been properly maintained can present a similar risk to other nearby wells. So I just want to be clear that it's not, I'm going to pause for a second. I feel like I'm yelling at my kids. Just to put into perspective that there are similar routes for water to get relatively quickly from the surface, you know, down into affecting groundwater, which is certainly not something that we want to see, but I think it's more common than we like to think. And from a well-water testing perspective, you know, in terms of what we see, we do run a pretty extensive list of heavy metals for wells across the state. And by far, the biggest concern is bacteria and lead that's coming from premise plumbing. So while there's certainly concerns, you know, with fully developing the site, you know, in terms of what's done with any wastewater, and if there's any kind of injection or things like that going on, in terms of the core, you know, the core boreholes, I don't see a huge risk, you know, given the distance that I've heard from private wells to the site. So just speaking about the cores in particular.
Does anybody else have any additional questions?
Are there, any heavy metals brought up in core drilling? Bring a core up.
Bring it up, please.
Can you hear me? I say, any heavy metals, any heavy metal brought up during core drilling?
It depends on what you were drilling into. If this company were drilling for lead or arsenic or cadmium or something like that, which are all commercial mineral products, I would say there would be some risk of that. But what they're looking at here is gold, which is chemically inert, completely chemically inert. It doesn't dissolve in water. It doesn't move. Gold does not really move in groundwater unless the water's incredibly acidic and incredibly hot. So, yeah, I'd say unless they drilled into some kind of vein that had heavy metals in it, that, I suppose that could happen. But that's not what they're going after here.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Spears one question, going off of what Chairman Bryan said, is that you said, could you reference what you just said about depending on if then, then it possibly could be used, depending on what's-
Not used in the drilling. I'm saying that if they were, if they were prospecting for cadmium or lead or arsenic or something like that, then they would be aiming at a vein that contained those minerals.
Right. But let me ask you, just as, question as a layman, in this vein that we're talking about, and I know you know a lot about what's under the ground in this county, which we're very fortunate to have you here to be able to answer these questions, is that possible?
I'd say in other parts of the county, for example, the more traditional gold belt that runs along 15, there are sulfide minerals in there that would be more likely to contain some of those heavy metals, those elements. We haven't seen a complete chemical analysis of what they've pulled up here, but it's not in what we call the normal sulfide belt, which runs more or less along Route 15. So the traditional gold belt actually has more of a risk of heavy minerals, heavy metals geologically than where they are out in the warmest terrain area.
As long as we're getting into this, it might be helpful if you could explain the difference in the geology along this Route 15 Dillon area versus the geology up where the drilling is taking place.
Okay, here-
Maybe the age difference in the two areas.
Yeah, I don't think it's so much a difference in age as it is a difference in geological environment. The traditional gold belt that runs along Route 15 is what we call a volcanic rock, volcanogenic rock. The rocks themselves are derived from volcanic ash deposits that were formed in a volcanic belt that was in an offshore island chain. But there's a major, major geologic boundary that runs roughly through the Buckingham High School. And everything east of that would be the volcanic rocks. And everything west of that is very, very different. You've seen these rocks. They look like shale, kind of a silvery rock. It's what we would call a, it's a tridol sediment. It's basically a mudstone that's been compressed. And the gold here is occurring in veins associated with the mineral quartz. So it's not as associated with sulfide minerals as the gold to the east of the line that runs through the high school. And that's a big, what we call a tectonic suture, that runs right down the middle of Buckingham County, two very different kinds of geology. And that's why this is a fairly unusual gold occurrence in the western part of the county. If you look at the historic mines, they pretty much line up right on either side of Route 15. Very, very little gold has ever been found to the west of that line.
Anybody else have any questions? About the supervisors, do y'all have any additional questions? Well, I guess, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate y'all having given us your time and answers this evening. I guess that's pretty much, if there's no additional questions, anybody again? Okay, well-
Again, I'd like to thank the panel for your participation and cooperation and all of the answers provided tonight. Thank you all very much for taking your time out to join the Buckingham County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, should we have a discussion amongst ourselves after having gathered the information? Is that appropriate?
Pardon me?
Part of the agenda, yeah, we can have a discussion, buddy.
Well, let's have the discussion.
One of the concerns I have, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, in doing some research, and I full well know that the reason we're here is to talk about core sampling, but there's also a large component in the back of mind, maybe y'all says, as to what's next after core sampling, if they're successful. And I would assume that they want to be successful. And I know that mining is a special permitted use in the agricultural district, in the A-1 district, let me be more specific. And that concerns me for a number of reasons in that the, and you all know more about this than I, because you've been on the Planning Commission longer than I have, and generally are much more intelligent than I am. But just in reading it, the A-1 district, this is what A-1 district calls for, for the purpose of preserving and promoting rural land uses. And they include forested lands, areas significant for the environment, such as lakes, reservoirs, streams, parks, and less intensive farming operations that are more traditional in character. The district is established for the purpose of facilitating existing and future farm operations traditionally founded in the county, preserving farm and forest lands, conservating, conserving water and other natural resources, reducing soil erosion, preventing water pollution, protecting water sheds, and reducing hazards from flood and fire. So just looking at that, having mining as a special permitted use in the A-1 district, and it's a special permitted use in the AC Agricultural Comprehensive District, seems like it's going against the grain with the purpose of the district. That's my main concern.
Well, maybe that is a concern that comes later. But right now, the topic is core sampling. And certainly, I feel that the landowner has a right to evaluate his land. But that's what this is all about.
Yes, sir. But it's not regulated.
Right.
It's not policed by anybody.
Right.
I mean, that's, I, you know, that's a- I guess that's a cheap way out for the state. You know, it's, yeah, and you can do it. And I don't have to police it. So I trust you to do what you're supposed to do.
Go ahead, Steve.
We know how much more core drilling and sampling that they need to do. Do you have any, have a clue? The done, or is it, want to come in and do 25 more holes, or is it something to worry about?
Well, Mr. Doria, we have to remember, the reason that we came here is for the core sampling activity, and it's been deemed prohibited because there's no specific use for it in our zoning ordinance, so it's not permitted. So the company was told to cease their operations for their activity. So that's where they are now. The activity has not continued because they've been asked to stop due to the prohibited type of activity through our ordinance. Now, Mr. Bo posed some questions about property rights. If Mr. Wright, our county attorney, is available, he may have some input in regard to property rights and zoning activity.
But you were kind of asking whether they wanted to do any more drilling or not. We'd have to wait and talk to the mining people behind that door.
You know, I've done a little bit, a whole lot of reading on this thing. And when you get into the Code of Virginia, it's 45.1-180 Mines and Mining. And, you know, it gives you the definition of mining. And that's where you're breaking the ground and removing goodies to be sold or used commercially. Then it goes on to say, "This definition shall not include, nor shall this title, chapter, or section be construed to apply to the process of searching, prospecting, exploring, or investigating for minerals by drilling." So I mean, it's, to me, it's expressly excluded right there.
Excluded.
Excluded. Ever go here, they're legal.
Well-
Please tell us.
What you're reading from is exactly what you were told by the group, that it's not mining. The 45 section you're referring to only talks about mining, and they wanted to make sure that prospecting wasn't included in mining.
Right.
So that's why they have that definition. But also, in terms, I think the question that Mr. Edmondson brought me out here in terms of property rights, the general notion is if it's not a permitted use in a zone, then it's not allowed. And again, we're a Dillon state, that what we have is what the state gives us. And we can't regulate mining except to the activities and the areas in which it's done. Now, you're exactly right in reading the code, but what that says is prospecting is not going to be regulated by the state of Virginia. That's all it says, that definition. That just means the state of Virginia's not going to regulate prospecting, and that's what you were told by the experts.
That's right. I-
Also told that there's not another county in the state that they're aware of that is raising an issue with this.
Well, we adopted this ordinance in October of 1997, and you heard the references to when these activities occurred. So I don't know when the last time any prospecting, drilling holes occurred in Virginia. I know that in 19, I'm going to say somewhere around in 1966 to 68, some of the cores that I suspect were donated to the state of Virginia, that they occurred during that time. I don't know when the drilling occurred on, between Mr. Allen and the geologist, when that occurred. But I suspect it was prior to 1997. So we have not had an ordinance in place that suggested that, that I'm aware of any time prospecting is going on in Buckingham by the way of core drilling, except for this event. And if it had happened, it just never got called anybody's attention.
Mr. Wright, we had tried to address this through asking for a register from the company. Mr. Wright, we had tried to address this through asking for a register from the company. In your research, which we got, that would require the county adopting a business license for all businesses. Would it be feasible to shift the burden to the landowner, that they would have to bring the information to the county, either?
How would you want to do that?
Well, in other words, if they entered into a lease with the mining company to do core samples, we as the county would ask them, and I think we could create a form that could be emailed to them, or they could pick it up, just for some questions that would stipulate whatever we chose to do, as long as we didn't approach, kept within our legal bounds. But in other words, the landowner's responsibility is to come and notify the county that they've entered into a lease with the mining company to do just core samples, and therefore we are able to create this inventory, register, whatever, because they do that. Now, my question to you is, is it, as a county, are we able to do that, require that from the landowner legally? I know when we did the, years ago, when we did the first revision on the comprehensive plan, we required to allow family cemeteries, we required that some family member come forth and bring, the best they could, a drawing, a sketch, an aerial photograph of the location of this cemetery plot for the family, so it would serve dual purposes. It'd be for the county to know where it's at, it'd be for the potential buyer in the future to know that there's a graveyard there, but also for the family members themselves, you know, 20, 30 years down the road. So we put some obligations on them at that point with that. Can we do this?
You can create a mechanism in your zoning ordinance to do something similar to that. Okay, either, I mean, they would come right back to the same question. If you, if it's permitted use, or used by right, I mean, is what I should have said, they don't have to do anything. If you do, say with a special use permit, then it starts with you and ends up with the board as to whether that special use permit should be granted for that information. Land activity zoning always falls on the landowner. That's why you require that first or second or third page in the zoning application where the landowner says, "I'm delegating the person applying for those changes to make those requests of the, for the text amendments or either for the special use permit." All land activity falls on the landowner to control.
I understand that, but I guess my question is, if we made it a buy right, but with the caveat that the landowner has to provide this information to either Nikki or Rebecca Carter.
I can give some thought to that. It would not be in any particular zones, and depending on how you wanted to go about it, if you made it applicable to all as a general thing across all zones, you may catch more fish than what you want to catch in your net.
Well, I would have no objections to making it across all zones. Myself, that way we know exactly, I'm like Mr. Supervisor, Mr. Bryant, I think that, I'd like to know when somebody enters into it. I don't have to know all the pertinent information, but at least know, okay, they've entered into a lease and there will be, there will be some activity on their property with this core sampling.
If that's the direction that the board and the planning commission wants to pursue, we'll see what we can do to give it legs.
Well, that's just a suggestion. That's all it is, it's a suggestion, floating an idea. But I wanted to know if we actually had the legal authority to require the landowner to do that.
Had a little discussion, not an in-depth discussion about exactly how that would be accomplished.
Okay.
So my answer is maybe.
Good enough for now.
That's the biggest thing we want to know anyway, is they're in the county and where they're at. Because people call saying they were in the county and nobody up here knew it, so it's just a thing of notification is the biggest deal, what I see right now.
Yeah, I've tried to say in this discussion as well as others, once y'all decide between the board and the planning commission, in what direction you want to take the policy, we'll try to find a way to facilitate that for you. So for me to say that's good, bad, or indifferent is really not my role. You tell me where you want to go, define the ditches as I've come to your farm, and I'll try to keep you between them.
Well, with the geologists and everybody here that was here tonight talking about it, I didn't hear nothing that was actually bad about core drilling. And that's all that we're talking about right now. I know everybody's talking about down the road's going to be mining, but we are, it's already set up. If someone was to come up here tomorrow and say, "I want to go mining," and they got all the right paperwork, you know, it's set up in that zoning to, you know, to do mining. But, in A-1, yeah, but I, to me, this is just, just one little thing in A-1 that we just need to take care of, anyway.
Ashley, Steve, do y'all have any thoughts on this?
I think we need to give Nikki some guidance to what to do and come up with a suggestion, at least to help her along. She's sort of between a rock and a hard spot here.
And I think I might be in the minority, but, you know, we're very focused on what's been happening with Asta Bay over the last four years, and I know that's how we got to these conversations, but as a planning commission for long-term planning, I think we have to have a better plan for not just that location, but county-wide. And David Spears, he was very passionate about his career. I think geology as a science is important to understanding what we're doing, and core sampling is a big part of that. But it sounds like there's still a lot of hesitations, like Supervisor Brian was talking about his expression that, you know, it's not regulated at all. And if that's a concern, which seems like with the amount of people that have been coming in the boardroom during these discussions, it sounds like that's kind of where everyone is leaning, is that there's no county regulation either. So for this project and potential projects, to keep the plan moving forward and to get the verbiage in all of our zones, and to keep our residents comfortable, I, like I said, I might be in the minority, but I was leaning more to the special use permit plan that we were on a couple months ago. I think that gives the county the ability to at least have some control, you know, usage of water, reviewing, you know, what's around each planned site, proximity of drilling relative to adjoining properties. You know, this property is huge, but in an A-1, I mean, some of the smaller parcels could be, what, just a couple acres? So do we really want to rig, you know, exploring property right next door to, you know, a double wad next door? I think that eases some folks' minds in terms of our ability to assign someone to inspect the holes when they're done with their activities. You know, we talked about these locations that may have heavy metal contamination, should it become an activity, you know, in that vein that Mr. Spears was talking about. So I am of the opinion that a special use permit would be a good compromise for letting people do what they want to with their property, but still having the county have some eyes on it for what would be best to all residents in that neighborhood.
Harry, do you want to give us some guidance? I mean, we work for you. As a planning commission, what do you want us to do? What direction do you want us to take?
Currently, if we take no action, then the way it's written right now, they have to have a special use permit to core drill in an A-1.
No.
No, no, they're not allowed right now. We don't, we, yeah.
No action, no action, they'd never be able to do nothing.
Right.
Right. They don't have the right to do any.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm hot, man.
You are that.
We got you.
But don't you have to get a, a permit to put a well on your property? I know down on I N, Johnny and I live on the same end of the county. My dad's well is 500 foot deep. That's the only way we could get water up at his house. So, I mean, that's going in the ground, eight-inch well, 500 feet. So what is, to me, is something we could make some kind of compromise to where these are getting backfilled, back with grout when they're done. And I work in the construction industry, in the pipeline industry, so core drilling is common practice. It's done all the time. VDOT, like they said, VDOT has to do it on the road, they have to see where the base is, so they know where the rock is, so suitable material to build a road on. So to me, it's, we can make some kind of compromise that we can make it work. Johnny had, I thought that was a good idea, but we need to know when they're doing stuff in the county. They shouldn't be doing stuff for four years and nobody knows nothing about it. That's, that's the issue I have with them.
Yeah, that's where registers would come in. They, once they came into a county, they would register, and they say, well, this is the name of the company, this is where we're drilling, this is how long we're doing the drilling, and they make it where they have to renew it every year. So if they're back next year, we know they're back, but registered doesn't sound like it's going to work very good.
We don't have landowners coming great pain for us while this is going on around the house and nobody in the county knows. That's what they usually write.
Right.
That, that's pretty much what I've heard, because I live out that way. You know, why didn't you tell us? What are they doing? And the fear has been instilled that this is going to a mine. We need to get that out there because they've been told of revenue sources for the county, jobs for the county, and, and so I think that, you know, with them not knowing really what was going on there, I think that that was a fear of theirs. So that would be, as we've said, another step they would have to take. With getting, you know, an SUP.
And we'll put the monkey on y'all's back and y'all make a recommendation to the board supervisors, which way you want, which direction you want to go.
I think legally, you're going to have to do it a little differently. I think you're going to have to give them some direction.
Yeah, the procedure is the board will direct the planning commission what you want them to look at. They need to know what you want them to look at doing.
After they, after they do that.
Back to you, Harry.
After they do that and make a report, they can change, they can, you can say, "Look at this," and they can say, "Have the public hearing," and do whatever, and we don't think that's the best proposal. They can send it back to you, it's something different than what you asked for, and then you can change it again after you do your things. But I think you need to start them out with saying, "Look at this."
I like the idea of the buy right with the, with the register, but you know, that's a little issue we now have, so the way that Johnny was saying a while ago, we do it with the landowner, I like to look into that some more. That's my thought. Rest of the board, whatever y'all want to say.
Mr. Chairman, I would like the planning commission to schedule a public hearing to take mining out of the A-1 district. It would require changing the zoning ordinance to be in compliance with our comprehensive plan.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. And Supervisor Brian, can we add a C to that as well? Because it's also in the agricultural comprehensive district.
Yes, sir.
Then we leave it only in the industrial district, in the zoning ordinance.
So if that's the case, just to make it clear, should these people there want to come back and apply for a mine there, then they would have to have a zoning text amendment?
Or rezone.
Yeah, well, yeah, to rezone it. Yeah, you're, to rezone it to industrial.
But I mean, why would you do that? I mean, why, we're jumping off on a different thing now. We're here talking about core drilling, and now y'all are going off and back into mining again. We're not talking about mining right now.
Yeah, it's directly linked, I think, Supervisor.
Everything you do is to link to something else, but tonight, we're talking about core drilling and whether it's bad for the county or not.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor.
He's got a motion. Vote for him.
Sir? Call for the vote. I have a motion on the floor to get the public, to get the zoning, planning commission to schedule a public hearing to take mining out of an A-1 and an AC district.
I want you to modify your motion to ask the planning commission to take a look at that and make a recommendation to the board after conducting the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Play on words.
Just for clarification, I understand you're saying mining. Are you also saying no core sample also?
Right now, core sampling's not authorized in there anyway.
I know, but that's what we're here for.
We're here for, that's what we're working on.
That's what we're working on. I mean, what you're saying is valid. I'm just saying, I'm asking for the planning mission, all right, what do you want us to do about core sample? Because that's, it's two different subjects here.
Right. Well, right now, core sampling is not permitted.
So in other words, no action on core sampling.
That's right.
So it's no, not on void in Buckingham. Okay?
No, not, we hadn't voted on it, we haven't gone.
Well, no, I mean, but.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
All right, you got a motion on the floor to have the, that the zoning stay as it is, no, no core drilling?
No, no, he's just taking it back to the, to the planning commission to check on the mining, to see.
Take mining out of the zoning.
See if they would, see if they would look at taking the mining or the zoning and give a reference back to the board.
Have a public hearing.
After the, if they get that far.
All right, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote again.
Roll call, Jennifer.
Raise your hand to vote.
Jennifer?
No, we're voting, yeah.
Best show of hands.
Call a roll. I think it was a roll.
Do you need a mic?
Brian?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Davis?
No.
I say yes, I'm here.
Matthews.
You got Matthews on the phone.
Matthew?
Matthews?
He playing with the baby.
Supervisor Matthews, are you still with us this evening?
Can he hear us?
Mr. Matthews, your microphone is on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
You've been, they're calling you to vote.
Re, I know that, but I had one other thing I wanted to add in discussion before we vote on this, but anyway, you already started, but I'm just curious, it doesn't look like that the comprehensive plan and this special use permit for or against are in line. So I think the planning commission needs to look at the comprehensive plan along with what they're planning on doing right now. Am I right or wrong?
If I could comment, if, if the planning commission has a hearing and makes a recommendation to the board of supervisors to take mining out of A-1 and A-2, then you do not have to change your comp plan. If that's a recommendation, and then the board of supervisors would have a public hearing and make the final decision, then that would be, you would be in compliance with your comp plan. If you would decide, yeah.
Okay, so we're voting, that's what we're voting on right now, is that what you're telling me?
We're voting to change the zoning ordinance.
For, for A-1 and AC?
Yes, sir.
And, and what, so we're going to change those two zones to not allow mining, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yes.
To be in line with the comp plan, God.
To be in line with the comp plan. So, so moving forward, if someone wants to come in and do that, they're going to have to apply for a special use permit. Am I correct on that or not?
No, sir.
There won't be no special use permit.
They need to rezone it, rezone it or find an industrial zoned area of the county that is, that is permitted for mining, Supervisor Matthews.
Okay, so what, can you tell me the votes again now? Tell me what, who's voted, how?
Brian, yes. Miles, yes. Brian, yes. Alan, no. Davis, no. And Chambers, yes.
I'm voting no on that, so.
What's, what's the final count?
Four to three.
Four, yes, and three, no.
Four, yes, and three, no. Okay, motion carried then.
So at this time, our planning commission has, um, been asked to schedule a public hearing and remove, um...
I prefer that the motion was to study the issue and make a recommendation to the board of supervisors after conducting a public hearing.
And the public hearing will be to, um, possibly amend the ordinance in the A1 and AC1 district to remove mining, leaving it only in a heavy industrial zoning district, correct?
If they remove it, I don't know where else it's allowed.
It's, it's nowhere else allowed.
Their direction is to consider removing it from A1 and AC.
Gotcha.
But the, yeah.
Their question, Ms. Carter?
The issue with core drilling, that's what we're here for tonight, and we kind of jumped into another zone.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I would like to see the planning commission, and this is just me speaking, not speaking on behalf of the board, because it would take motions and so forth to get that done, but I would like to see some options as to identifying, it's just putting what you all have said in writing in terms of some proposals for us to look at for core sampling when there's mining involved. I don't mean all core sampling. Because again, VDOT's gonna go core sample for a road. I'm gonna go core sample for a new house I'm gonna build. So there's gotta be some variation there, I think.
Yeah. You just got rid of it.
No.
No, no, you didn't. You got rid of it.
The only thing I, the only thing I supported was taking mining out of A1. That's right, that was it.
If you don't have, uh, if you don't have mining, you, you ain't gonna, ain't gonna need a Warrenburg core drilling.
What if I want a core sample?
Nothing. No, no.
That's why I'm asking if we could have.
You just voted no for it.
You cannot do that.
The thing we voted for was to take mining out of the A1 and AC district.
Right. If you don't have it, then where you gonna have it? Who's gonna core drill? Why you gonna core drill? There's no mining in the county.
That's just right there in Prince Edward County, Luckstone, you can't do core.
Yeah.
They couldn't. If Prince Edward County, they couldn't core drill in A1 district, that, that new core would be that.
Supervisor Davis, we can't hear you, so put, we, we want to be able to hear you for the notes of this meeting, so please, please.
I'm saying, if you make it where you can't do core sampling in an A1 district, because you took mining there, the new Luckstone core just opened up in Prince Edward County, if Prince Edward had that same amendment, them jobs and all wouldn't be there for anybody where that new core just opened up right there on 460.
And, Mr. Davis?
We had So light, we had So light here for years. They had to do core drilling. You had two slate cores in off on you for years. You got a conite over here. And look at many jobs, and look how it's carried Buckingham County. And now y'all say, we don't want no mining. Y'all are full of prunes.
Mr. Davis, to, to your point for the aggregates with Luckstone, I will bring up that I was contacted by an aggregate specialist last week. And I think that one of the reasons that we're here now is because of the way this activity was discovered. No one knew about it. That, no one had approached the county to discuss this project. The difference with what Luckstone did in Prince Edward was even before they had acquired the property and, and had everything in place, they approached the county in months and months and months of discussion so that the county would understand that they would be sampling that granite and going no more than 10, 20 feet, because as it was explained to me, a 30-foot sample costs too much money for a low quality or a low, uh, value commodity. So if they're digging granite, which is not gold, they wouldn't definitely probably not go 30 feet. But that it was in the, um, vision and mission and the ethics of that particular company to approach the county that they were gonna work with very early on in the process. So, and yes, they were successful in that. So I think that the issues coming from our citizens, um, in the public commentary have been that no one has been aware of this. There was no partnership or stewardship towards the county to explain the process. So as EM Wright, our county attorney, mentioned, there've been some, um, suggestions on the table from the planning commission to give us, you know, some direction to move forward, to give legs to, um, a possible idea. Um, as it is now, according to, um, our zoning ordinance, it is prohibited. So, you know, as we take a look at, you know, how, how do you make this work, or does it just not work? I think there's a difference in the attitude of the company of, of we'll use Luckstone since they are the ones that mentioned this evening. I will go back and state that conite mining was brought up tonight and the expansion of their facilities. I do work with one of their individuals there, and the majority of the property that they own in and around there, we'll use the East Ridge plant, is currently zoned, um, heavy industry. It's an M2. So as far as core drilling and, and expansion of that property where they are now, they are zoned for it. We've had conversations in the past in regard to if they want to grow outside of what's zoned, um, in that M2, what would be the steps for them. I think it's different, too. They've partnered with this county. They've been here prior for a very long time, prior to the zoning ordinance. Um, and they are citizens of this county and, um, employers of our citizens. And once again, they partner with our county. So I think the issue comes down to the fact that this was discovered after over four years of drilling with no contact to the county, to describe the process.
Ms. Edmondson, how much of the county is agriculture they want?
The majority. I would say 95%.
So we're gonna limit any possibility of mines, core sampling, on 5% of the acres in the Buckingham County.
Well, I will say once again that our comprehensive plan in stating what the vision, as Ms. Schumaker, planning commission member Schumaker mentioned earlier, if we're gonna discuss the vision and the mission of this county and where we see our growth and where we don't see our growth, and it's not that we don't see, um, industry coming into the county, but is it going to be consistent with the zones in which it wants to be in? So I think before us, we do have a responsibility.
When the slate core started in Conite, wasn't that, at that time, agriculture?
It would have been, yes, sir, because we had no zoning.
Well, if we take his position, we wouldn't have Conite, wouldn't have slate cores. We wouldn't have So light.
They could have rezoned.
It could be a rezoning. There was no zoning at that time, so they, they had the ability to carry on. I do think, months ago in July, I brought to each of you a county near us, one county that I could find, close to us, out of, I did not research 95 of the counties in our state, but I did bring to you what is happening in Green County. They were the only county that had an example of mineral extraction in an A1 for household use as a permitted item. Mineral extraction for commercial use was by an SUP in their A1 district. So if we want to look to what other counties are doing, I think it's important to remember, there's no regulation for this. Other counties are sitting here just like us, not, not knowing the core sampling that's going on. Let's discuss, the core sampling for, for VDOT, architects and engineers, is that not brought back at some form or fashion to discover, for their discovery? What were they looking for? Why were they looking for it there? How deep did they go? Was it suitable for what they were doing? It would be in a state finding.
Is it regulated by the state? Yes. They're a state agency.
Correct. We have a state agency, DMME, that does not monitor this, and that was told tonight.
The highway department gets funding, correct? They probably required to do that. We're talking about private enterprise here.
Mm-hmm.
Not required, because they're not taking state funds. So I don't know if I comparison.
Well, I just, I would go back to what Mr. Wright said a month ago. As a property owner, you do have the right to do things with your, with the property that's your own. But your zoning ordinance is, shows you the allowable activity in ways that you can do that. So there are certain things I'd like to do on my property, but it's either not zoned appropriately, so I can't do it, or it's only permitted by the way of a special use permit. I would have to come to the county. I can't just do it because it doesn't state. We've gone through permitted or prohibited. You know, it, it's one of those things. 50% of us may read our zoning ordinance, and if it's not specifically listed, we'd say, okay, well, it's not listed, so it must mean I can do it. The other 50% say, it's not listed, I can't do it, per the state code and the way that we are governed. When it is not specifically listed, it's prohibited, and it's not allowed. So that, as we go back to the issue at hand tonight, it is core sampling, and we've called it for commercial use since we've started this conversation. Permitted, uh, prohibited, prohibited it is. You can do nothing, and it continues to be prohibited. You can take a look at it as a zoning text amendment for a permitted item, or a zoning text amendment by way of a special use permit. But we're, we're still back to this core sampling, and it's currently prohibited.
And the question is, do we want to regulate it and how?
And if you're gonna regulate it and you add it in a permitted, what else do we regulate in a permitted or by right item? That doesn't have a state agency associated with it in order for you to move forward to do it? Correct. Or with the help of Mr. Wright, if he could give legs to how we would add it with the conditions that we would find out.
I think we must have, Bickford said it made a lot of sense to me, if you think about it. Put some espouse a bit on the landowner to, you know, if anybody don't, you know, to get these permission. Then you know what's going on then.
Because core sampling's not gonna stop, right? But, but I think is what Supervisor Allen was saying. I mean, it's.
It doesn't stop then?
Right. But, but, but mining is perim, is permitted in the industrial use, I mean, in an industrial zone, I should say. So therefore, core sampling for that purposes would have to take place.
In agriculture.
Sir?
In agriculture, right now, A1.
Right, right now, just what I'm just saying, in an industrial, what I'm saying is, is that because mining can't be in one district proposed, core sampling's gonna go away. Like y'all say, people core sample all the time. Might not be for mining, but it might be for a host of other things.
I don't know. It is said it's not, not legal anywhere, so I guess.
Mix apples and oranges, Danny.
Huh?
Don't mix apples and oranges here.
Yeah, I'm not. Is it core sampling? This is core sampling. That's all I'm saying. Why are you, why are you jumping into a, a different batch of apples anyway? You, you don't go on off of him.
Because it needs to be fixed.
What? What needs to be fixed?
Currently, the zoning and the comp plan weren't in agreement with each other.
And that's something we work on.
And that's what I just made, that's what, that's what my motion was for.
Your motion is to change zoning. We ought to be working, the comp plan is the thing we work on. The thing that we change, that's a living document that we work on every five years, upgrade. You ain't never looked at it. Ain't nobody else ever looked at it and know that this was a problem. And, you know, it talks about minerals for the county to be looking at and doing. I don't see nobody looking at that, but that's fine. What are you thinking?
Johnny, have you got a look at your, uh, idea?
If, I'm sorry.
With Mr. Wright, about putting the burden on the landowner?
For the registration, right.
Right, yeah. In other words, your core sampling would be by right, and we could make it, as Mr. Wright said, to make it have more standing across all districts. I certainly wouldn't want it in, you know, B1 or something like that. That's, you know, don't want that. Not even really sure if you want an agricultural comprehensive, but that's a discussion you can have. But if you shift the burden over to the landowner to bring the information forward when he enters into a lease with whatever mining corporation, you're sort of creating that register at least the county is aware of what's going on.
Then it would prevent, you know, like, like you mentioned, then it would prevent someone from coming in, doing things without the county knowing.
Correct, correct. As long as, I mean, the, the citizens of Buckingham would have to know that, to look, hey, if you're gonna enter and do a lease agreement with a mining corporation, uh, this is what you have to bring forward. I, I would suggest that a questionnaire form be created, if we go this route, if we're able to go this route. Uh, Mr. Wright will have to check that out, uh, that Mr. Wright come up with a questionnaire that would, uh, have the questions that we're able to ask legally and try to get as much information about that lease. Uh, and that way, they just have to check a box, fill it in, whatever, something, rather than allowing them to, uh, bring their own, you know, give them the questions, they bring their own answers, you try to create as simple a form as possible for them. But you get as much information as you can from them.
Okay.
Wait a minute, now you're talking about, I'm, I'm lost. Now, you're talking about trying to go back with what Johnny said about the core drilling. And just a minute ago, you said, you said, we're getting rid of mining.
You're adding words in my mouth, Mr. Allen.
You didn't talk about him just now about core drilling?
Like I was saying, Mr. Bickford, are, are you gonna pursue that?
If, if that's, yes. I mean, if y'all.
Thank you.
If that is the favor of the board of supervisors, we'll certainly.
And that's what I'm talking about. That's core drilling.
That's right. Supervisor Allen. That's my motion, Mr. Bickford. Would, would, would you consider approaching that with Mr. Wright, uh, based on your suggestion to put the burden on the landowner?
Big lad, too.
And that's, that's where we hit it. Yep.
And I'll second, is, is that a motion? I'll second that.
He done already done it.
Oh, I thought, I thought you made a motion.
He just repeating it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to give them guidance, though, Joe.
We didn't vote on that, though. You just voted on.
No, I just made that motion now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What you saying? Okay.
And I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have one person that's out right now. One, my mother's not in here right now.
Say what?
Alice?
Uh, no, no, no.
Dennis, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis just running for a second. Why are you waiting on a vote?
The same one, I could get this out the guy before.
No, no.
Okay, man.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm gonna go. Where you going, huh?
No, he's in the bathroom.
Mr. Davis, they just made a motion to send it back to the planning commission to work on, trying to get a way to write it up for the, uh...
Put the burden on the landowner.
Core drilling, so the landowner would have to fill out paperwork saying that.
Registration.
Well, I don't want to call it registration, because we had troubles, we had trouble with registration word before. He kicked that out, so.
Questionnaire.
Questionnaire. That sounds better.
An answer air.
Mr. Wright said it would have to come through the zoning, so.
So it'd be, needed to be added as a permitted use? Is that what Mr. Wright's saying?
I guess so. What'd he say?
That's what we have to work on.
He says it works, basically, it works in progress.
All right.
To work with the county attorney on it.
All right. I have a motion on the floor that we, uh, the, uh, planning commission come up with a questionnaire for, uh, landowner to, before they're core drilling. Get your asses to, is that correct?
Johnny, does this replace your first one?
No, sir.
No.
No, sir. Not at all.
This is a rider.
Commit, uh, Mr. Wright has suggested we'll, the questionnaire, that will be discussed with the planning commission at the same time. That way, we can come up with a series of questions which we'll provide at the same time based on the legal, uh, assessment that he has on the project.
The, the questionnaire is gonna be something if you legally can do it. What you want the planning commission to do is consider whether you legally can have landowners register when there's commercial prospecting going on on the property.
Right.
Okay.
That's what you want to have the planning commission take a look at, and if they can do it, then the questionnaire will follow to that.
Yes, sir.
We don't have to vote on this motion then.
Yeah.
I think we do.
No.
To give the planning commission direction?
That's right. Get your planning commission direction. We don't need to vote on it now.
If, if they come up with something, come back to you, then you have to send it back to them to do a public hearing. You'd be telling them that's what you want them to do. They need to make a report to you. You'll save your next. You'd be telling them that's what you want them to do. They need to make a report to you. It'll save you an extra step.
Then it eliminates one step.
Go ahead and take a motion.
I would suggest, if you could, if...
You gotta withdraw the motion, right?
Have extra time, you could think of a question that you might want to pose. If this is actual...
Withdraw and leave a vote on it, right?
I think we should.
Do need a vote, please?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did vote on that now?
No, no.
Yes, sir.
No.
Yes.
We're jumping ahead of the planning session?
They just said we do.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, Dan. No.
Miles?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Davis? Chambers?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
All right. Six yeses and one no. Vote card.
Then we've got a lot to work on.
We got...
That's it?
We've got a couple things.
Got a couple things on the...
Planning Commission, they're going, stay here, we'll, while they do the...
You can go to E. Go to E.
Mr. Chairman, my last question.
Three, two, three.
Consider the action, yeah. They don't, they don't tell us what they want to do.
Okay, is there any other Planning Commission action?
I don't think...
I do have just four minutes.
Okay.
Supervisors, Brian, let me, just for clarification, on your vote to not allow mining in the A1 and A C districts, you mean none whatsoever, or requires a special use permit?
None.
None, okay. I thought that's what you indicated, but I just want to make clear.
None.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Well, it's going to be a recess to reconvene.
Reconvene? Is this, you want us to recess?
Yes, sir, number F, letter F, if you read that recess to reconvene to Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at your regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Recession of the Planning Commission to reconvene Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. That one will be at seven o'clock.
Joe, you got any candy? You gonna make it? Yeah. Mr. Chairman, with regards to the other two items we have?
Yeah.
I was going to offer a motion that we waive the credit and debit card fees during the tax collection months, and I would, I think that's a, be a great incentive to, A, to get people to continue to pay from home, and B, to get people to continue to pay without that extra, additional, not penalty, is not the right word, but help me out, Donnie, a little bit, the fee that they would have to pay.
Pay the extra fee.
Convenience fee.
Second, I second your motion.
I have a question on that, Ms. Carter.
Can that fee be reimbursed to the county through CARES Act?
You let it pass.
I don't know. I'd have to check. I think, I think we, when you all did it in June, did we say what's going to be CARES cost? Does it help the people pay from home and pay online? Because we, but we were, our offices were shut down then to the public.
Right, because currently, we're back in the, in the, in the state that we were in.
Yeah, we can try. Yeah. But we did find that, and I guess it's convenience of going on your computer at night, paying your taxes, rather than come up here, that it, we believe it, tax collections, don't you, Carl? We really believe it did. And so what would be the timeframe you want to extend it?
I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman, could we do, could we do, I don't know how soon technically you can do it, but could you do it, like, starting next week through the end of February? Is that too much?
What is usually the tax collecting month's end of?
I know now.
Through December 5th, so.
December 31st?
31st.
But I might add that the collections through to April really come in good, and that's when people get their county decals, so they could get that done, too, without paying that fee.
I can't, I'm sorry, Becky, I didn't hear you.
I said, if you start it, like, from next week through December 15th, that gives them, they can do their county decals and pay their personal property tax. Uh-huh.
April 15th.
April, I think.
April, April 15th. You said this over here.
April 15th.
It's sort of in my motion to make it effective the first of next week through the 15th of April.
Yes.
Are y'all good with that?
Yeah, that's when most people finish up your taxes, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
And I second the motion, so, yeah, vote them.
Make a motion for that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion?
Yes, I second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Allen. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Brian?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Matthews?
Don, Matthews.
Go on to sleep.
Yes. Yes, I fell asleep.
No, he didn't.
What is it?
He said he fell asleep.
All right. Vote card unanimous. Next thing to consider, additional small business grant applications. Mr. Carter, you have anything on that?
Yes, Mr. Miles is the board representative on the committee where we did the last business appreciation, our business grants, small business grants. And so we were looking at how to reach some other people that did not apply before, and so Jordan came up with some ideas of what we could set that criteria at and try to get on a fast pace, because it does have to go through the I D A, to maybe do another round of grant applications for businesses, small businesses.
So, Mr. Chairman?
You have the money for it?
We've got some money, yes, sir. It all has to be spent by the end of December, too, so.
What's the current balance on that?
It's not exact, but we've got...
Can we give me a wag?
Several hundred thousand.
Okay.
Several hundred thousand.
Several hundred thousand.
Several hundred.
Ones that already got money cannot reapply.
Right.
Right, what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, is, and I know you and I talked, and Supervisor Chambers, that's true, the idea that we had is just do it like we did last year, last year, last time we did it, and add that if you've gotten B S B A money, which is our, which is this board's small business grant assistance money, you can't come back and apply.
Right.
So what I was thinking, that we could do $6,000 for businesses, and again, these are new businesses who have not applied in the first round, and I'd like to propose that we do $3,000 for nonprofits.
Three, or sorry?
What's that?
You said six or 60? 6,000?
60.
60.
Yeah, 60.
And then 30.
60,000.
That's what we did last time.
Oh, okay.
Yes, 60,000.
Yeah, we done 30 the first time, then 30 the second time, total of 60.
Total of 60 the one time, and then, so what I'm putting forward is 60 for businesses, and I'd like to see us do 30 for some nonprofits in the area, especially for personal protective equipment, not for any revenue or anything like that.
Well, you know, I saw in the, you know, we'd questioned several times, can we give anything to the fire departments? We couldn't find anywhere where they could qualify, but I did see where Prince Edward County did. And what I found that was mostly from was their loss of fundraising money. So they would be considered a nonprofit.
So what I'm thinking is, maybe we can take that $30,000, add it to the 60, and if, obviously, we need to do a little bit of research, but there are many nonprofits, and hopefully, those could include the volunteer fire departments, who could be a part of that when it comes to those fundraisers that they've missed. I know COVID just finished theirs, and I don't know how it break up, broke up, but I do think that they could, that if we opened it up to them, we would see a lot of need that we could help with the CARES Act money.
I know that Dylan lost quite a bit.
They did.
Yeah, with the, with the tractor pull, but we, but we weren't able to help them because it didn't qualify for CARES, but now it may qualify under CARES.
Under nonprofit.
Nonprofit. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and just to specify, the 60,000 would be for businesses who have not applied in the past for this, and the 30,000 would be nonprofits, and I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
But you, I, go ahead.
Got the motion. Mr. Allen, second it.
Seconding the motion, but at the same time, I question, what if, what if they had lost a lot more than 30?
So, what we, Supervisor, that's a good question, Supervisor Allen. Supervisor Brian and I, the chairman and I, served on the committee that did that, and we pretty much just dolled it up best we could. We had one business that lost gobs and gobs and gobs of revenue because they had to shut down and X, Y, and Z, so we weren't, we weren't able to get, give them nearly the amount of revenue that they lost, and we couldn't even touch it, but I do know, I think it was 5,000.
And remember, we had a ranking sheet, and we based it on where they had received other funds through other governmental programs and SBA loans and those type of things. So we had some that had received no outside sources, but had lost, year over year, a considerable amount of money in that time period from January through April of lost funds when they were ordered to shut down. So we do use our ranking process, and we also configure where they have received other outside sources, how much, and those type of things, just to make sure that it's kept fair across the board for the fund designation.
And we did find that, you know, because we put on our website, reached out to all the counties, all the businesses we could, but we found that many did take advantage of the payroll protection plan money, and also the small business, and for the protective, personal protective equipment that, you know, they...
Right, so Supervisor Allen...
Right, many of our businesses got system, and we were really glad to see.
So to answer your question, Supervisor Allen, they're vetted very well by way of the application that county staff put together, and then your suggestion, Supervisor Brian, early on, if they've gotten X, Y, and Z, they're not going to get nearly as much as the business did.
I think what Danny's asking is to increase, to go to 60, 60? Is that what you're saying, Danny?
I don't have no idea how much to pay, you know, or could take it and just make it slide it back and forth.
2,000, what do you think?
You know, just say 90,000 and use it wherever you need it. You know what I'm saying?
So in other words, don't say we're going to do 60,000 for this and 30,000 for this, use the 90,000.
Say 90,000 and let them use it wherever they can use it.
Or go 60, 60. 60 for the businesses, 60 for the nonprofit. Would you consider amending your motion for that?
I would amend my motion as contingent on our budget of CARES Act money. Right, yeah, which I assume we do have, but $60,000 for nonprofits and 60 for businesses, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Y'all heard the motion? Second. We ended up further discussion. Call for the vote.
Brian?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
All right, vote card unanimous. Any other business?
Going to get on fast track on that.
Supervisor Brian, I'm going to have to get with you, because we're going to have to fast track this process on the committee that we're on.
All right, well, are you going to set a deadline on it?
We've got a little plan, so we'll let you know.
Want the committee to set a deadline?
We can, we can do that. We'll set it.
Okay.
We've got a little plan, because it has to go to, the I D A has to actually prove the expenditure.
All right.
You all appropriate the money.
This board meeting is adjourned, then.